All right, I'm going to call, depending on orders. Stanford, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Pearn.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Now, is there any public comment? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. That's the authorization for payroll bills for the town fund, general assistance, road department, and sewer. And also for my reports, the social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Or second, good. Any questions on these reports? I would point out that the food pantry, the demand continues to expand. It's, on one hand, we're handling it very, very well, and very proud of our pantry. On the other hand, it's sort of sad that it's growing that rapidly. And I'm sure there's, I know there's several reasons, but still, it's a sad commentary right now. All right, it's been, the motion's been made, and it's been seconded. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Pearn.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, the approval of the minutes, October 23rd, 2023, regular board meeting. You all had a chance to read it. Is there a motion to approve?
Told.
Is it second?
Second.
Okay, any questions for me or for the clerk? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Pearn.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. And our presentations. We're going to do a presentation on the, an update on the website, but in connection with this, I'd like to introduce Mandy. I think most of you guys know her, but she has taken over responsibility for communications, both external and internal. She's been extraordinarily impressive in terms of handling some of these matters. Before, we added that responsibility to her. So she did a good job, so now she's got it. She'll be doing, handling the newsletter, the newsletter that we send out to the residents. She'll be managing the website. She'll be handling social media. She does the internal newsletter, which, if any of you saw, that's, it's a huge improvement over what we've done in the past. She is also going to be handling some of our PRS issues, and she's also going to be handling any special needs or signs need to be made, things like that. So I'm excited with her coming on board. Do you have anything you want to add?
Sure, yeah, thank you for taking over that introduction for me. Good evening, everybody. So Mandy worked in administration for quite some time, about a year, and during that time, she helped me tremendously with content creation. As you know, it's not always easy to come up with new things, so we kind of worked together as a team for the entire year she was in admin, and then she was promoted recently. We've taken over all of our social media platforms. We no longer use an outside source for that. We've also created an Instagram page to kind of target a younger audience, particularly with our youth services, trying to get to our high schools. This was a huge success when we did the cereal bowl just recently. So Instagram is booming. It's a really good place for us to be right now. We are also posting every single day, thanks to Mandy. Initially, we were posting for a very long time, just two times a week. And although that helps, and it kind of grew our followers, the everyday posts are very helpful. It keeps our followers engaged. It also helps everybody kind of stay connected. So that's just social media. Beyond social media, we have other promotional content, both digital as well as print. And kind of moving along with the wave and where everything is headed, we're trying to make sure that everything looks very crisp and clean and is a true representation of who we are and kind of the services we provide. So we want to make sure we're hitting the right audience. If we have senior programming, we don't want to throw that to where the youth is. When we have youth things going on, we want to make sure that we get that audience. So kind of, for a very long time, we worked together, and I've handed a lot of that off to Mandy. With the website, it's kind of a year in the making, so I'm here to present the website. But moving forward, Mandy will be the one who updates it, keeps everything on track. It is going to be an internal thing now, so we will have all of the control over our own website. That wasn't the case for quite some time. So sometimes we did have things that were out of date or took us a little bit of time to update, as you know. So I'm going to kind of walk you through it. I'll hit kind of the big things. I won't take too much of your time to walk through every single aspect of it. If you have questions, let me know. It's about 90% done. We expect that sometime in the middle of December, this will go live. It will be accessible. There will be a little button at the top that people can hit to help, you know, hard of hearing or people who need bigger text or things like that. As you'll see, the website is very clean. It's easy to navigate. It's got really good language. We had a copywriter kind of work through it to make sure it's easy to understand. It's all in the same tense. Our newsletter, as you'll see, our next newsletter that will be printed in January, looks very similar. We've kind of went with the same look. Everything is going to look, it's going to look very professional. It's going to really reflect the services that we provide here. So I'm going to start with just the landing page. This is what everybody will see as soon as they get on. There's a quick search button. If you just want to pop in there and say property taxes or something like that, it'll take you to where you need to go. Our board meetings will always be announced. Quick description of how we help our residents, and then a quick links to things that are constantly looked at or looked for. So any of these will take you to those landing pages. I'll walk you through that in a little bit. The next item, right now, you know, we were working through this during November, so we have our Thanksgiving drive. This is a very new thing. We popped it up there, so it's one of the first things that you can see when you get to the website. Upcoming events, right now, we have board meetings listed, but you will have, we're working on a calendar, Mandy and I, 18 months out or so, we will have all of our events scheduled and kind of set. There's a couple of reasons why. One, it's on the website, people can plan to get here. Another reason is to coordinate with the print of our newsletter. Our newsletter goes to a lot of residents. It hits like 40,000 households, and I can tell you from experience, if we plan to have something within three weeks of that publication date, I am having a really good turnout. People really rely on that newsletter, and so we want to make sure that the newsletter and the website are kind of working together to get people here and to make sure that we get a good turnout for our programs. Latest news, those are going to be your press releases. Easy to find, most recent three, but then you've got more news, there's an archive. We're going to have people subscribe by email. Our newsletters will be available electronically once we build a nice subscriptions. We have, I'll go back to the top, and we'll go through the assessors. This is, we'll start with the about page. I'll just start right at the front, so you guys can kind of see what that looks like. And don't mind it being slow, it's on like a special server because it's not live yet. Once it's live, it'll be much faster. About page, nice, clean, easy to understand, some demographics. A lot of people don't know all the municipalities that we are a part of. They see Elk Grove Township, and they think it's just Elk Grove, so we like to include that anywhere we can. Click here, you can view the township map. It takes you to Google Maps. Here's your elected officials page, township budgets. Click here, you can find all the budgets that we have. People can download the newsletter as well as visit the newsletter archives. I'll take you to your page, so you can see kind of what that looks like. There, you've got short descriptions. You can read your full bios and contact information for you. So that's kind of neat, similar to what we had on our previous website, but just a lot better in organization. You know what, let me show you one other thing. Here you've got meetings, minutes, and financials, so this is where our archives are. Some of these are required by law, and others we just post. Here's that calendar, it'll be kind of in that same location. And here's all your documents, right? So we've got our newsletters, we've got all of our financials, everything we currently have organized. I'll show you kind of the minutes. They're organized by year because there's lots of them, but that's where you would be able to find them, everything kind of in one place. I will take you to the assessors page. We've got a purpose. We've got it split up between appeals and exemptions. We've got our assessor and the staff at the assessor's office. Here, we just included the press releases for now to use as a placeholder, but Connie will be able to decide kind of what news she wants to include there, whether it's from Cook County, it's from the commissioners, whatever she wants to throw in there, she will be able to put her own news in there. I'll kind of walk you through, I'll just pick one. Exemptions, right? So this is not currently something that we have on our website. People can come in here, see a short description. Do I qualify for these exemptions? If so, let me download an application, and I can either walk it into the assessor's office or mail it where it needs to go, right? If they have questions, of course, we still encourage them to come in or at least give the assessor's office a call, but at least we have everything in one place. She's got other documents in here as well, right? Exemptions, name or change of address, things like that. Anything that people come into the office for is on the website. People are going to give us a call. Instead of saying, hey, come in and pick up this form, we're going to say, hey, visit our website, download it, and bring it in. You're skipping a whole step. Okay, this, this is kind of a different way to organize things, but I will walk you through this as well. Social services, those are services that you need to, they're income-based, there's a threshold for those, and you need to be a resident of the township to utilize these services. The next thing we have is resident services. Resident services are things that you need to be a resident for, but they don't particularly have an income threshold. And then community services, things that anyone in the community can utilize, passports, employment services, veteran services. You don't have to be a resident, and you don't have an income threshold. So that's kind of how we organize all of our services. If someone goes to social services, something that we often see is they're looking for emergency assistance, right? It'll bring them to the social services page. It'll be the landing page. We've got our department directory. Now, this is really important. People who work with social services often remember their social workers or case managers' first name, but don't remember how to get ahold of them. Again, sometimes they kind of remember, I'm supposed to send an email, but I can't quite remember how to spell it. So we can direct them here, it's easy. They can get ahold of every single case manager, they can get ahold of the front desk, they can kind of utilize that directory. This was something that we implemented because those girls are always giving away their contact information, and people lose it so often. So things like emergency assistance, general assistance, they're going to have the application and the checklist. Checklist of items that are 15, you know, 15 or 16 items, people forget what they're going to bring. Hey, let me visit the website and find that. So they've got, these are, these are going to be separate pages. It just looks like this because it's the demo, but when they click health services, this will show up. If they hit assistance programs, this will show up. So these things are split between the two. I'll pick something in. So resident services, let's for example, visit the food pantry. Right, something that often happens, we added a ribbon. We don't have anything in the ribbon right now. Once we launch, we will make sure it's the most time-sensitive thing. Right now, I probably would have the basket, I'm sorry, the Thanksgiving box distribution, okay? Everybody who visited the food pantry this month received a Thanksgiving box. I would have that in there. Sometimes we do that for Christmas, sometimes we do that for, you know, the month of July, we do grill or something like that. Every single time I have something going on, if I get a big donation of something that's going to expire and I need to get it out, we put it on the free card. People can come utilize the free card even though they've used their food pantry visit for the month. I'm going to put it in there. I want people to come get whatever it is that's about to expire, right? I want it out of here. I want to make sure it's being used. So I'm going to put it in that ribbon. Everything else is kind of explaining what our food pantry is, how you can use it, and what you need to bring if you wanted to register. We've got, we've got a couple of places where you can donate. Obviously, that's really important for us. I want to, if I'm a donor, I want to be able to find that button anywhere I go on this page, right? Phone number, kind of most needed items. Again, this is mostly for people who utilize the food pantry, not so much donate to it. I will visit ways to donate in a little bit, but if I'm, if I'm trying to donate, I want to find it. Community services, we've got, we'll visit employment services kind of at the top there. So again, anyone in the community can utilize this, these services, they don't need to be a resident. For this, we've kind of got all of our additional phone numbers listed. If people are quickly looking for that, we've got the flu vaccine clinic here. It is a community event. You do not have to be a resident in order to utilize that. This would also be in the events calendar, and it would also be on the front page, kind of where you saw the turkey. So we, a couple of changes here. Facility rentals kind of stay in the same, handicap placards. We've got the form up here that people often come to us to get. Some of the clerk services are up here, of course, fishing licensing, things like that. Everything's over here. Border registration. I'm going to visit the community job board. We just, we just put up some jobs that we came up with, just so you could see what this looks like. But basically, search bar, jobs throughout the entire community. It won't be just our jobs. It'll be any jobs from Elk Grove, Mount Prospect, Arlington Heights, Displanes, Rolling Meadows. We'll take jobs from anywhere that will help local people find employment. We'll list them on our webpage. We'll also encourage people to come see the employment center specialist, and he will be able to kind of help them with their resume, some, I'm sorry, some interview skills and things like that. But anyways, job description, what the job is, full-time or part-time, when we've posted it, and then you can submit your resume right away. This will go straight to us, but if it is like an outside job, it will go to, it will go to whoever wants it, whoever posted it. We'll visit ways to, oh, we'll visit road maintenance real quick. For road maintenance, we've just got the couple of services that we provide. I'm just scrolling right through so you guys can see. For example, snow removal. As you are aware, we have IGAs with Mount Prospect and Elk Grove Village. We give them the direct phone numbers. We also have sewer. We can now take payments online as well as cash or check in person. Driveway permits, here's that little application. Here's everything I need to do before I apply. Same thing with branch pickup. We just give some of those little rules of what not to include in your branch pickup. Very, very simple for that one. So, okay, I'm a donor, I want to donate something. I, I don't know if it's for, you know, holidays or food pantry. Here it is. I can donate online, that's super easy. I can send a check in, that's nice. But you know what, maybe I want to donate some items. Here's a list of everything we may need. This is just something we have going on right now. There's our Thanksgiving drive. We've completed this program, so this will come off, but we also have the holiday gift drive as well as the older adult angel tree. So any kind of programs that are happening, food pantry campaigns, anything we need more of would be on this ways to donate page. We've got the Super Bowl coming up. We're going to make a nice big flyer for that as well on here. Additionally, we're connected to all of our social media accounts. If you click any of these links, it'll take you to those pages, which is super important. We're trying to make sure that everything is kind of connected. Events calendar, that'll take you back to that big calendar. If I hit news, it'll take me straight to those press releases, right? Most current one, and then everything afterwards. Contact information, that takes me to a nice, simple form that I can fill out. It'll go directly to admin@elgrovetownship.com. It's got our location, and again, that's social media at the bottom. Any questions for me on the website?
When is the launch date?
So in the middle of December. She gave us a tentative launch date, the week of December 11th?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure, so there is a lot of parts that go into this. There's the web developers in the background, there's a designer, there's a copywriter. So a lot of energy has gone into it. Just kind of figuring out how to organize things so that people can find them easily was, was, was a challenge. But I am super excited. This is a really big part of our quote-unquote branding and kind of getting our name out there and making sure that it truly reflects who we are, so.
Excellent.
It is an exciting, exciting new thing.
So do you, Izzy, do you, are you like in charge of it? Are you the, a charge of content, or is there multiple people?
So, so when I, I have been in charge of it for the last three years, so anything that was printed, but I also had other job duties, so it wasn't like the only thing that I did. The website has been all me, just working with a web developer and trying to put that all together. But ever since Mandy's been promoted, I've been able to kind of give that away. Specifically, content creation, that is so time-consuming. I am not a graphic designer. I do my best, and I was able to kind of hold it down for some time, but Mandy truly has a knack for it. I mean, she is a designer to the T. So we're going to make sure that everything that comes out of this building, anything that is printed, like I said, digitally or in print, truly reflects what we're doing. And it's kind of, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing, because if one person handles all the flyers, handles all of the brochures, handles the website, handles everything that kind of goes out there, you can truly get the message across. And of course, it's not just one person is responsible for making sure that the right message goes across, because I'm looking at it, Paul's looking at it, department heads are of course looking at it. That information comes directly from them. So it sees a lot of different people before it actually goes live, but one person is creating it, and it's got that signature, right? So it's kind of an exciting time at the township right now, and we're truly developing a lot of programs. As you know, you know, doors were shut for some time. We were kind of gearing, we were doing our best to get through times, and now we're really building. And our events are truly, truly getting popular, and we are helping a lot more people than we ever truly dreamed to help. So it's looking good out there for us.
I think this is part of what we discussed all along, is that we wanted to make sure that we became more visible in the community, that people were more aware of what we were offering and what we provided. We wanted to provide branding that was consistent, and Mandy's, by having one person that goes through, that ensures that the material that we're going out is branded the same way. We wanted to make it as simple, easier for people to use, both in terms of reading, that they, that it's not, that it's something that draws them in, that they, they'll read, but also the website where it's easy to navigate and easy to use. And then we have somebody internally who's managing that. We have the capable, we have the skill set now that allowed us to bring a lot of this more inside, and that will provide some savings in terms of the contract we have on the public, on the public relations arrangements that we have right now. So that'll make some adjustments with some savings. But I'm really looking forward to this. I think Izzy really moved forward in terms of making all of this, all these things come together, and now it's Mandy who we can blame when things don't go.
No, no. You're not always a good. No, you know, we're kind of, I don't know if you saw my most recent email about kind of getting those, some of you have those newsletter articles, and so it really is a team effort. There's no other way to handle something so large. We've got a lot of content going out, and it's daily. I mean, every single day, we are working together to make sure that we are just up to par with everybody else, if not exceeding those expectations. And our residents really, really do appreciate it.
Another thing I'm working on, I was just talking with Suellen about this, is building up our township media base to actually use our own photos instead of stock photos. So photos from our own events, you know, not a stock photo that we're just Googling on, on Google. So we'll have our own photos to use in the newsletter or on the website or anything like that, so our residents can see themselves in, you know, photos.
Yeah, we, we have tasked some of those department heads, hey, everywhere you go, you're snapping some photos. So we give them kind of some rules, some ideas of how to get those photos, candid photos, and like Mandy said, when residents kind of see themselves or people in their community, it's a true representation. It's just, that's exactly what we're looking for. So those photo archives, those are indispensable. I mean, we could use those for years. And our department heads are in the community every single day, representing who we are and what we do, and kind of pushing those services. So for them to snap a couple of photos, it's just a little extra step, but it helps us tremendously, so.
Yeah, I think that that's like, for instance, Dick is going to participate in Rees across America. I can't do it this year, and he's going to represent the township. So if he can get someone to take a picture and then get it into Mandy.
Yeah.
Then we have something that's not just some stock picture, but is actually a picture of us participating in, out in the community. So that's just one example. Or when we're at Toy.
Yeah, yeah, we took some photographs, yeah.
Those are things that we want to be able to reflect, but particularly those things where we're doing things in the community.
It is very.
Whenever you're doing something other, you know, shoveling the neighbor's driveway or something like that, you could take a picture of yourself.
People may start calling you. It is very, it is also amazing, yeah, if we can get some of the elected officials to be in those photos, that, I mean, that's great for everybody.
True.
Okay, all right. If that's all, I will shut this down.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Mandy.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. That's the, I don't think we have any other presentations at this time, so we'll go to reports. Assessor?
You have my written report. I also included the 17-page report from Maria Pappas, and I got to thank her for putting this kind of data out. I don't know how many people read it, but it's well worth reading. I would highlight, you know, we get asked all the time, why did my bill go up? And it's very easy to say that, well, you know, the schools are 60-some-odd percent and, you know, inflation and what have you, but this pointed out particularly that the increase was the highest in 30 years. And that's staggering. In an economy that, you know, people are struggling, this tax bill has just been horrific, and of course, by the way, it's due in payable December 1st. In line with that, tomorrow night, I have my final outreach program of the year. Commissioner Samantha Steele from the Board of Review will be here, and I believe Senator Laura Murphy. Senator Murphy and I have been working for the last three weeks on the problem of mistakes by the county that severely affect our senior citizens who are on a freeze. Mistakes been made, and God knows that the county says they don't make mistakes. We've pretty much tracked them back to their processing center. But what we've been dealing with is seniors who, if the freeze had been applied appropriately, could have handled the bill. Because it wasn't, they now are facing bills they have no money for. So I've been working with Senator Murphy. Hopefully, we'll speak again tomorrow night. We have talked about possible legislation that any senior, or anybody really, whose exemptions were erroneously dropped, would have all penalties waived. I mean, if you're looking at a senior who can't pay that bill, and now you're going to punish them with penalties for mistakes that were not theirs, is just hellacious. So this, I've spent an inordinate amount of time, and I do thank Senator Murphy for her help. She's been absolutely terrific. The other thing that I would point out is that so many people experienced an increase in their assessed value, and they looked at their improvement, and they didn't see much change there. What happened is Assessor Kegy, with limited, at best, data, raised all the land values. Now, he did do them uniformly, so we can't use that as an appeal form on land value at all. So it's, it's been a real headache, and my taxpayers are getting rather frustrated. There's two other items that I think need to be mentioned, and people need to be made aware of. First of all, what is the effect on a TIF district, on property taxes? People have no clue what that's about, and that's becoming problematic. The one thing that I found particularly troubling was the recapture provision that was passed by the state legislature. If, for example, a corporation went through all of the appeal processes up to PTAP and got a substantial reduction, this provision allows the taxing bodies in that area to claw back that money. Now, that's on top of the raised assessments and everything else, and that's another reason why taxes are going up. Next year, I hope to do a series on what's going on in the taxation in Cook County, because people need to be aware, because elections have consequences. Other than that, I do invite you to the outreach program tomorrow night. You're certainly always welcome. Commissioner Steele is bringing her analysts with her, up to 12 analysts. So the people that will be coming tomorrow night will be able So the people that will be coming tomorrow night will be able to file directly with the Board of Review without going through my office, which is going to be a big help because, you know, we'll make it by the deadline, the 12th of December, but it's going to be a close call. Between the bad tax bills and certificates of error, plus being open for Board of Review, it's been challenging. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Have, have you been able to use that IGA that we put in place that you can share?
No, simply because everybody's going through the, the same tax bill time.
Which is normally not the case.
Well, tax bills, no. Everybody's open at that point. It just, we just got lucky being open for Board of Review at the same time. But all of the offices, I've been in contact frequently with Ken Jokum from Wheeling, that they're seeing the same problems, which is, you know, why we've been collaborating to try and determine where these errors are coming from. And at this point, it's, it's got to be, it's got to be the processing center. These people do not understand the consequences of their errors on our, on our seniors.
When would, when would the IGA's be of value to you? When is that?
When we're open for Board of Appeal or with Cook County. Because for example, if, usually if I'm open in Elk Grove, Wheeling isn't. Or Schaumburg isn't, or Maine isn't. So that's when it really comes into play. But since Mr. Kegy has been in office and we've had delayed tax bills and have no idea when we're going to be open for any of these activities. We used to have at least a fair idea. But since we don't, for example, it really plays havoc with personnel because I've had people on vacation. I can't tell them not to go on vacation when they've got airline tickets and family weddings. So, yeah, it plays havoc with the budget. They were hoping to get back on track, they said, next year. I don't know. I think that's a, I think that's a coin flip.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Connie?
Yeah, for your, the outreach tomorrow, do they need to, they need to bring stuff with them? Or do they know they have to bring stuff with them?
Basically, in the invitation, all you have to do is give them your address.
Okay.
And they can pull, pull up the PIN. Interestingly enough, you know, obviously we do research for our taxpayers with our AIM program, the Assessment Information Management Program. However, and I will also tell you this, this is thank you, Commissioner Steele. She has sent out analysts on four different occasions to help us get through this. And I truly appreciate, you know, her support. But they have their own management information system and the same comps come up. So if they come in and say, hey, I live at 123 Main Street, they can pull that up, pull up the PIN, know exactly the property type and the correspondence of who's higher, who's lower, and if they have a valid appeal.
Excuse us to do that ourselves, pretty much, you know?
Not anymore, yeah.
That's nice.
Okay, there's no other questions. The clerk?
I just had one FOIA this month. It was rather an involved FOIA and our IT person helped get all the information. I just have the email, I don't have a name who it was from, but our IT person and Administrator Piak gathered all the information for that. Agency Grant Committee, we have had our first meeting. And we're having the second one in two weeks. And then in January, January, we'll start having some of the agencies come in for presentations. That's it.
Any questions for the clerk?
Thank you.
One of the issues that we're dealing right now with FOIAs, and there's actually a webinar, which I asked Izzy to, to participate in, is we have gentlemen that will show up at the township with video cameras and request, or demand access to those things which are, are public and need to be available. But what they're trying to do is get an inappropriate response from the staff or from members. And then they'll, they'll take that and post it on YouTube. So there's a, there's a webinar where they're basically trying to, Toy is putting out there, trying to show leadership in the township, administrative leadership, how their people should respond when these people show up, what they can do, what they can't, how you prepare yourself in advance for a potential situation like this. And there's some things that we already have in place, but there's some other things that we probably should, should, should provide. And there's a couple of townships that have had very bad experiences, others have handled it real well. But this has been going on for, for a while now, but it's just become a little bit more pronounced. So, but we've got, we have had some FOIAs here that are very broad in nature. I mean, like.
And many requests.
Yeah. And, and sometimes you used to get some from the watchdog groups. Or they, you know, that, the groups out there that were tracking, you know, fiduciary response, being financially responsible and so forth. But now we're getting ones from anonymous ones even. And those are legitimate FOIAs. You have to respond, even if they're anonymous. But, but they're, they can be very, very time consuming for our staff. And I don't know what their fishing expeditions or what, what the reason for some of these are. You really sometimes don't know. And that's why too, what I need to do is when, when you, when you have official business, you do it on the township, you have to do it with your township email. When it's not official business, be careful, because I at times haven't been. And, and make sure that it's on your personal and not, not an Elk Grove Township email address. Okay, all right. Supervisors' report. I don't know if you guys saw, you all saw the article in the Herald regarding Road and Bridge. I'm rather pleased, I was scared, to be quite honest. Paul spoke to Mr. Griffin, and then I spoke to him as well too. He originally was, I mean, felt he should call us because he felt that we were out of, we are out of, way out of sync. We were charging way more, we were raising way more taxes than we needed. He didn't realize that half of the money that we collect goes to the municipalities through state law and that we were only really using half of it. And as such, as you saw, we are at the, well, at the low end of the cost per, per mile. He talked a little bit about with, since we've gotten rid of the highway department and we've saved, he realizes we've saved money by outsourcing. Nonetheless, he was asking why we still had a levy. And the explanation on that was that, one, we still have four miles of road that we have to take care of. And two, that the major repairs, our last one was about half of the roads we had. We did a major repair on those, that was over a million dollars. And so every so often periodically, you have to do these major repair projects. We're doing a short, I mean, a, a small one this year, about 30,000. But we have these major ones periodically, and so we're, we're building the reserve back up. Once that reserve is built back up in three, four years, then it can be reexamined whether the, whether the, the levy will be reduced, or maybe at some point it will be eliminated and the expense will fall under the town. That you don't want to do until your, your mileage is substantially lower. Okay, on construction out back. As you've seen, if you get a chance to drive back there, everything's pretty well completed. They still have to put up the fence. I don't think the fences and the gate is up yet. They're going to be doing landscaping along the berms and so forth. That may not be done until spring, obviously, and the seeding out there. But it's pretty well up and in place. And it looks like it's, I think it's going to be a very, very nice facility, both challenge course and bike safety. And we will have a grand opening sometime next spring. When the weather gets a little better, it won't be right when we open, but it'll be next, next, next spring. We'll do a grand opening. And do it, do it well. I mean, I think this is a real unique, the bike safety is a real unique service that we provide. And we've been doing it, we're one of the townships that have been doing it for decades. In fact, like I know some of us have gone through it even, which means it's centuries almost, so. But I, and, and the challenge course is a, is a real significant addition to the youth services programs that, that we provide. That's the next thing I mentioned, is youth services. We have now established a process with District 59. Izzy did a real nice job on this again, whereby we offer to the district every semester a, a palette of, of courses that we are, programs that we, that they can use from us in the, in the element, in the, in the District 59 schools. And then we tell them how many hours that we have available for them as well too. They take those and decide which of those programs they want to participate in and which, where they would like them to be held, what school, what classes. And they come back to us and say, here's, here's what we would like, here's what we would like, here's what we, programs we want, here's where we want to do it, and, and with these particular classes, if that case may be. It's given us much more of a structure. It's allowed us to make sure that what we're providing is what the schools need and what they want. And I think if this, as this rolls out, if, if this goes well, we then will move to District 57 and work, work with them as well too. Renee has given us hours so she can do 57, 59 eventually, and then still have time internally. I mean, for onsite programs, as you remember, we've give, we've added a, a part-time facilitator. And if this program grows and demand is strong enough, we could move that part-time to full-time. But I think what I'm really pleased about is we've given this program more structure and so that we can manage, we can manage it in a way that we know that our customer is getting the services they need and they want. And I know what resources are needed to apply to make this work. Before, I was rather a little bit cloudy as to what we were doing, where we were doing it. I feel much better about it now. On the employment, I think Izzy and Mandy mentioned this, and I think that's important too, is that shift we've taken in terms of our employment center and our focus. You saw we have a job board now that we're going to be populating. And anyone that goes on, that looks at jobs also gets a, sort of gets notified that we have a, a employment specialist here who can help them with resumes and with interview skills. But we're leading with the job board now. And we're, we're going to be managing that in a way that one of the, the staff members will be managing that to make sure, the, the job will come in through, through our, our, our employment specialist, then go and be posted, and then that individual will make sure they're current and that they will continue to follow up to make sure we don't have things on there already filled and so forth. And I think Elk Grove Village is very interested in cooperating with us on this. In particular, because of their business, their manufacturing, there's, there's still huge demand for, for employment there. And they want to find more ways to promote that. And I know Mount Prospect won't participate with us too, but Elk Grove has been particularly interested. So that's a change. And we were waiting for the website before we moved forward on that. A couple of things, I just want to mention, remind people on the, we've been expanding our programs and, and our services rather aggressively since we've got into our new facility. And our focus has changed more to program improvement and program expansion and meeting the needs of the community, finding out what those needs are really, meeting the needs of the, of the community, being there where we're needed, not just doing things for the sake of doing things. And along that way there, we've discovered there's some areas where we needed to make a, a much more of, have much more of a presence. And one of those is an adult and family counseling psychiatric services. And that's why we're still looking to add a therapist, another therapist. We added a part-time, and now we're looking to add another therapist because our waiting list is 15, 16, 18 people. And if you remember, we, we were criticizing Kenneth Young for that. And now we are, we, we're experiencing the same issues. There's just a huge demand and we need to stay current with that. It's very difficult to find qualified therapists too at this time. There's just not a lot available. So we're, we're working hard at that. Other personnel that we're looking at at this point, we're going to need to hire a bike safety coordinator. Would either be part-time or it'd be something where they are, they, in the season, they do bike safety and in the other part of the year, they have a different responsibility. Not sure, you know, I'm not sure if that makes sense, but if it does, I would prefer to have sort of a full-time person than a part-time person. Maybe somebody that could also help in youth services. I'm, I'm not sure, but that's, that's another position. We're also looking for a part-time bus driver. Right now, we're, we're pretty tight in terms of someone that gets sick or goes on vacation. That's going to be right now impossible to find, but we're looking anyway. Along with that, I would point out that we are exploring software, dispatch software, that instead of doing this all manually, we, some of the townships have software that creates real-time dispatching. So if somebody calls in and says, I've done early and I need to get picked up, the individual that is in the front office that also works as a dispatcher can enter that in the system and it will adjust the bus schedules on real-time. Say, okay, you're going here instead now. And I think that will create greater efficiency and, you know, it'll, it'll be much quicker. We also are, Corey is looking at working with like Northwest Community Hospital to find a nurse who would come in a couple of times a week for wellness programs. And there would be, what this would be is they would set up appointments, particularly with seniors, to be able to come in and have a, meet with the nurse for just initial, I would say wellness checks, blood pressure, things like that, to make sure that, and this is for people that maybe aren't regularly going to the doctor, people that maybe can't afford to do some of these things. And it'd be a way for us to, 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 I think, improve a little bit of the, it'd be a nice addition to our healthcare offerings. And it's not dramatic, it's not a big program, but I think it's a program that, that would be very effective for a, a component of our, our resident base. And it's relatively easy for us to provide this in a partnership like with Northwest Community Hospital, like we do with the dental, the dental lab. So those are, those are a couple, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware in terms of personnel issues, where we're looking. I would also mention too, that the Toy Conference, I appreciate those of you that went down there. I was able to get together with the, to, to our two elected officials, Dick and Dale on Sunday night, and then everyone, Dick and Dale had to go back, but then the rest, I met with, had with the rest of the staff on Monday night.
Dick and Dave?
Dave, what am I saying? Dick and Dave. Dale, I'm sorry. Dale was, Dale was Monday night. But we, it was a nice opportunity to kind of get to know, on Monday night, the staff, spend some time with the staff and get to know some of the people a little bit more. Because we're, we're a little bit separated from the day-to-day operations, even I am. So that was great. And then the conference, I thought, was very good. There's always a, a session or two that is a, oh wow, I didn't know that. And I've been doing this for, I've been involved with the township for 20 years. And I still go to a, a session like I did with the, the records destruction one. We've been doing that or not, you know? And, 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 or ask the attorneys, there was a session on that. Couple of things came up on some of the new legislation that came through that was very, very important. For instance, with the GA and EA funds, we're now able to use some of those funds for other wellness programs. Before, they were very much segregated and fenced in. Now they're going to allow us to use those funds, if we have excess funds, to, for other wellness programs and purposes, which I think is going to really help us, you know, the nurse, you could maybe use it. If there is a cost associated with having a nurse in here, we can use it for those type of things. Then there's other, other, other legislation like that that really stepped out. And I think that whenever you can go, I think you should try to make it. Well, the cereal bowl went pretty good. I don't know if you guys saw, Elk Grove won again. But Rolling Meadows came back strong. As you know, they're, our neighbors, Brian, are the two principals, their principal of Elk Grove, the principal of Rolling Meadows, Rolling Meadows are married. And so she, she, she promised me that they're going to beat Elk Grove's butt next time. So we'll see, we'll see how it goes. But they did a real nice job. We had a record number of cereals, of boxes. a record number of cereals, the boxes that were collected. We were going to go, Mandy and Paul, I think we're going to go and present the trophy tomorrow, but that's been changed now due to some other issues. But we usually go into Joe Bush's class at Elk Grove if they are the ones that won. And he has a civics class and present the trophy to them. So it's a nice, it's a nice way to get kids involved, such as the High School Government Day that we did this year, which we will continue to do, where we bring the kids in, give them a chance to learn about the township, take them a tour. And what we're going to be doing going forward is have a simulated board meeting, where they can, they can intellectually discuss things like you guys do, right? Or stumble around, one of the two. But we're, the teachers really enjoy that, and we've got requests to do it more often. And I think that kids, the kids, I mean, they don't have civics or anything anymore. They don't know anything about how their government works, what's involved with it. And I think this is a good opportunity for a level of government they usually don't hear too much about. And then the, the, some of these seasonal programs that they've been running, that our staff's running have been going real well. I think the turkey, Thanksgiving, did they raise the full amount?
We were just like $100.
Oh, I told you to. Well, if you're just $100 short, you called elected officials.
I gave them my money.
The two Christmas programs are? I think what's, what's exciting about that one is, is that we've shifted from just bringing in toys, whatever the case may be, where we give the parents gift cards that they can use and to buy presents for their kids, so the parents can provide it to their kids. And I, I think that's a, another way that we can allow residents and families to kind of make their own decisions and do their own things. And I think that's, and, and, and do things within their family. So I think that's a positive. I think that's about it. Does anybody have any other questions at this point?
No, I do want to make a comment about staff. And it was Izzy at one of the classes that we're at, and her knowledge to the speaker's knowledge were, I would say, equal or not above.
It's almost scary as hell.
That was excellent.
No, Izzy does a great job. Yeah. I don't, I don't have to show up very much anymore. Yeah, that's right. Except to assign the checks. Okay, I think that's the reports. If there's no other questions, can I have a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay, there's no old business on the new business. The first item is approval to move food bank, the Food Pantry Bank account to Bucy Bank. I've been, I have been moving accounts over to Bucy Bank for one primary reason, is that they've been supportive of us in some of our programs, and have shown an interest in working with us in terms of some of the services or the programs that we put forward. And we have not gotten any of that at any point from Parkway. I think, I think both banks are good banks, but I just think Bucy is, seems to be more willing to work with us and be part of our, our community projects. So I'm, I have, we've moved the, well, I know that the, the foundation has moved their account over there. And I'm moving the, I'm going to move the, the Food Pantry Bank account. And at some point, we'll discuss the operating account, too. So if I can, if I get a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any questions about this? Okay, if not, roll call?
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Wheeling Township, IGA with them for social services. If you've saw, if you looked at the, the IGA in your package, basically what it is, is they're experiencing some real issues right now with, with their, with the staff that are not available due to medical reasons and, and other reasons. And we've been helping them, Corey's been helping them with their EGA cases. And I, I, I felt that it was important that we put this into IGA form for, just so it's, there's no questions in terms of what we're doing and how we're doing it, making sure there's no legal issues associated with it. And if you can see on here, we're, it's structured in a way that we can both assist each other. It's, it's, it's structured in a way that if one of township is providing more help than the other one is, they will reimburse the other township. And it's for three years. And at that point, it can be renewed, or it can be, any, any township can, can pull out of it at, at a certain amount of notice. Basically, this is similar to, a little bit similar to what we do with the Assessor's Office. We're just finding ways that we can, we can work together with other townships to, to, to use our resources to help each other and make it more efficient for the town, the taxpayer, and not have him pay more for, for some of these, some of these services. So anyway, I think it's a, I think it's a very good cooperative arrangement. And if I can get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So any, any discussions on this? It's, I think, there's, there's a lot of details to it, but I think it otherwise is pretty straightforward. Dick?
Yeah, so it's, it's not, it's, it's not like the, the assessors?
No, it's not like the assessors.
It's not like the assessors, where we loan employees. This is loaning, giving services to their, their community.
We're providing the services to them and, because they don't have anybody right now. And so we wrote this in a way that either one can help the other. But right now, it's us that's going to be helping them. And Corey has been able to do that a couple times a month and sort of take care of their backlog. And, and they will reimburse us for those services at, at our rate of, that we're paying for. So, and, and, and if they, if we need their help, they will do the same. But that's not going to be the case in the near term. It's us supporting them. And I just, I, I think that's the right thing to do, both for, between townships as well as for the taxpayer. But I also felt that we needed to have something legally in place to make sure there were, there are no issues. If any, if you have a chance, if thing comes up and you read, you read that again, something catches your attention, you can talk to me afterwards, too, and we'll, we'll address it. But at this particular stage, if there's no questions, we had the motion to approve. Can I do a roll call?
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
The proposal to add a new position, we've reached the point here with the new facility where we were, we were having repair issues, we were having, we were having issues in terms of setting up, getting stuff set up in time for different meetings, where the other administrator and deputy administrator are, are having to go run around and set up chairs and stuff like that. We had issues with things that needed to get cleaned up. We had a variety of issues on a, on a number of things that we, we couldn't address because we couldn't get a handyman, or because we were having to pull staff away from other, other jobs to get this done. And, and then there are other issues, too, like scheduling inspections and, 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 and security issues and things like that. The thought was to create a position that would be a facility manager whose responsibilities would include maintenance, safety and cleanliness, scheduling inspections, both equipment and building-wise, security, security situations, setups for events, assist with the road and bridge, assist with the buses. And we thought by doing this, we would, you know, we would probably be able to save on our, our cleaning, cleaning contract. I think we still would have them come in, but not, not on a daily basis. And, and it would, it would give us a, a, a permanent maintenance, safety, security, cleanliness, backup guy. So that's, that's the, and you can look at the job description there that's, that was put together. It's rather broad. And I think it, I think net-net, it's gonna, it's going to make things a lot easier for our staff, as well as I think that we're going to be able to offset that with some savings. And I think that with our new, larger facility, we need something.
It's full-time?
Yes, it's full-time. So I think the contract, whatever contract, whatever salary, whatever, would be offset through a reduction in some of the contracts we use, as well as maybe some adjustments in personnel. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, any questions? So this is, I had mentioned the different positions we are looking at. I didn't mention that because this was going to come up, and I could talk about that. Financially, we can handle all of this. Financially, we're in good position from an operating point of view. When we get to the levies, I will mention one new issue that longer term, I'm, 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 I was a little bit more concerned about that made me think that we needed to maybe increase the levy a little bit, but we'll get to that in a second. Any other questions on maintenance? I mean, on a maintenance facility, a facility management guy? If not, roll call?
Trustee, Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right, the number four proposed ordinance, 2023-4, Town Fund, General Assistance Levy, those two funds are together. You know, remember, we have three funds. It's the town, the general assistance, and the road department. The town fund in general are together. It'd be, I'll say right up front, I, we're not proposing any increase in the road department budget. We are gonna, we're gonna be building reserves with that, with our levy. And at, at some point down the line, that will be probably adjusted. But right now, we're trying to get the reserves back up. But we're not raising it, we're just leaving it, leaving it the same. And then it has been that way for 11 years. We're not changing the general assistance levy. We're in good shape there. In fact, I think we'll be able to use some of the reserves for other wellness programs. Where, where I am looking is under, is in this ordinance, if you, is, is the increase, the town fund by 2.75 percent. I'll be totally straightforward. Do we have to do this? No, we don't have to do this. We've been very financially responsible. All the increase, all the expansion and improvements and additions and services, as well as the personnel that go with them, has been covered by our, through, I think, just good fiscal management. Even though we're expanding, we continue to expand program-wise very aggressively, nonetheless, we've been able to manage our, our funds in a way where we are in very good shape. That said, what my one concern is, is, is that we do now have a facility with some capital asset issue, capital asset expenses. And so what I'm doing is I'm trying to establish in our budget, capital reserve funds, capital replacement reserve funds for major capital expenses, such as heating, air conditioning with the roof, the parking lots, the buses, those type items, where I feel it's very appropriate for us now to begin, and we probably should have been for a while here, establishing reserve funds that we're putting money into every year, so that if we feel the roofs have to be, if we feel the roofs are usually replaced on a 20-year cycle, that we're reserving over those 20 years to have adequate funds to take care of those costs. The buses, if we're changing, if we find out that we need to replace a bus every three years or so, two years ago, we need to be reserving money so that when that, that time to roll over one and, and let the other one, sell the other one or trade in the other one, we need funds, we should have funds in place to be able to handle that. So that we have a clear, we have a very straightforward, clean budget that we're not flailing around trying to handle big capital expenses out of our operating, in our, in our, our just general reserves. So if you look on, on your, on the, on the levy, under, on the, the ordinance, on the general town fund, at the bottom of the administrative division is a reserve for capital equipment replacement. That's just an initial, that's a generic one. I would prefer eventually to have a reserve fund for roof, a reserve fund for heating, air conditioning, the major, the major categories. Right now, I've just put in a, for the levies purposes, a generic replacement fund. And if you notice, that's $61,283, strange number. That's because that's what the 2.7% increase will generate. So I'm just putting that there right now. Is that the number that I will use for the, for the, for the replacement funds? Probably not. But I put that in there for right now. So that's a placeholder. And that reflects what the increase of 2.75 would be. Now, you guys can decide, no, don't want to do it. You can decide, well, if we're going to do this, why don't we do the full amount we can do, which is 5%, which would be $120,000 or so we generate. Or we can stay at 2.75, which gives me a little higher base going forward, and gives additional funds to wash into a capital replacement fund. Otherwise, otherwise, the town budget is pretty much the, all of them are pretty much the same as we've always been. Like I say, two are, are unchanged, and only this one is 2.75. And that all is budgeted towards a capital replacement fund. Funds are funded funds. Or do I, let's, let's go, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now, any questions?
I like the 2.75 personally. I think, you know, like I said, I think that'll do what we need to do what we want to do. I don't think we necessarily have to go all the way to the five. You know, we've been pretty proud of the fact that we haven't raised a levy in 10 years, you know? So I don't think we should do a big drastic one. We don't need it.
We don't need a drastic one, to be quite honest. This is just something to, to give us a little bit more of a base to fund these, fund these without dragging it out of our, our reserves. And we haven't raised anything for 11 years. And this is very minor.
I, I agree with the 2.75. It, it, on its face, is consistent with the way township has approached raising revenue and its fiscal discipline. And ultimately, if, if we need an additional, additional levy or additional revenue, then at that point, we cross that bridge, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and we've been, and keep in mind, too, that, you know, we've been keeping this levy flat. We've been, inflation, you know, was flat for a while there, and now inflation's kicking up. So another argument that was put forward on this is that it helps keep us up a little bit with the inflationary environment that we're in right now. And we have seen that. We've seen that in our, our construction side, you know, when we do change orders and stuff, which you always have, is, you know, if you've ever built anything, there's always change orders. But the cost of those change orders are, are significant enough because the cost of material, the cost of labor, all those things are, are increasing.
And we're hiring. We're hiring, you know, so.
Yep, yep. All right, if there's no other questions, let's have a roll call?
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. So for ordinance 2023-4, Town Fund, General Assistance Levy for fiscal year 2425 has passed. Now proposed ordinance 2023-5, Road Department fiscal year 202425. Once again, I'm just repeating myself, that is flat. We have significantly reduced our expenses. The only reason that we're retaining this at the current level is the reserve reserves. As I said, we had a, we had a major project five years ago. I would think in another five, we'll have probably another major project, even with these little small ones in between. And that last one cost us a million. I would feel that it's irresponsible for us not to anticipate, even with inflation, that it will, it will cost us a million again. To get back up to that level, about probably be the reserves, get the reserves up to the level where I think we'd be comfortable in terms of being able to handle a major project, probably be three, four years, at which point, you know, either you continue it like it is, or you can reduce it, or depending what's going on with the mileage that we have, you could move it under town, or it may be moved under town. So I don't know if there, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-05?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, seconded. Any questions on the Road Department?
Yeah, one question, George. You say one option may be to move it to the?
It may be moved on us at some point. We're at 4.1 miles. If we go under four miles, technically, I mean, at that point, we should be moving it under the town. Whether it'll move to town right away, I don't know. That'll depend. But we're gonna, our plan is to keep the road and bridge levy in place to build the reserves as long as we can, and at some point, it may have to move under town if our mileage drops, drops to a certain level. In the meantime, we could just do it anytime we wanted to, but if we did that, and we're trying to build the reserves back up, then the Town Fund, we'd have to jack that up.
Yeah, to cover that difference.
That's what I was going to ask. So you're stealing, you're either one or the other.
There'd be a correlating or corresponding increase in the levy.
Okay. So, yeah, the expense, it's not the expenses. We've dramatically reduced the expenses. Where our cost is, is to build enough of a reserve fund to be able to cover the next major project. And we know generally what that's going to be, and we want to build it to that level. Then at that point, we consider what we want to do with the, with the levy at that point. Okay, we got our reserve up. Do we want to, do we, is there a reason that we keep it at the level that it is? Do we, do we, do we reduce it? Do we, at that point, do we feel comfortable enough just to do away with it and move it under town? But under town, then the town has to pick up all those costs, and there's always going to be projects to fix, you know, to fix roads, as long as we have roads. Okay?
I got a question. What is this uniforms?
What are they used for?
Which ones are they for? On the road?
Yeah, on the road.
Says $2,000.
I don't remember seeing that. Just second, let me look.
Yeah, that's a good question. If we don't have any employees, why do we have uniforms?
You know, I think that's, is that Cintas?
So it would be, yes, it would be a little bit sometimes a little bit like the, you know, the, if you meant we help persons sometimes be provided, maybe you have to provide.
It is.
If it didn't write on the budget, it's a line I have to make.
I'll look, I'll look a little more closely at that. I have to admit that I had gone down this. It's always been in the budget, but I, now that you mentioned it, given the changes we've made, I'm not sure if that, if we're, it's the same budget we've ever had, but that, that may need to be, that may need to be changed. I don't, I don't know. I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly what the uniforms, what everything goes into the uniforms. I think there's some issues. There are some things like with unitas, where you have the mats and things like that that we still have back there that we still use that get cleaned and picked up, but I'm not sure if it needs to be 2,000 anymore.
Okay, and then second question is the IMRF. Who's using that?
Which one?
Oh, IMRF.
There may be, that may be for our field rep, but he should not be under this.
I don't think he is.
I don't believe he's under, under this. No, that can be, yeah, that can be. Yeah. That can't be, even if, even if our field rep's in there, that's, that is, that's more than needs to be, need to be in there. All right, so we need to, I'll have to look at making some adjustments to this. We have to call a special meeting then. Because I, these are legitimate questions that are being raised here. All right, well, the message, I mean, the, it's been, the motion's been made, it's been seconded. I think it may be appropriate to vote it down at this particular stage, and then I will, I will take this back and we can revisit it and hold a, and readjust it, and we'll hold a, hold a special meeting then if we need to to get this approved. I think it has to be submitted by what time? When does it have to be submitted? When do we have to have the levy in by?
I think December 6.
What, December 6?
December 6.
All right, then we'd have to have, next week, we'd have to hold probably a special meeting.
Can we, can we move the $12,000 to miscellaneous expenses?
Pardon?
Right. We increase the miscellaneous expenses.
We could do that. We could.
By $12,000. We could do that. And that doesn't mean, even though we levy this, that
doesn't mean that we have to spend it either. It can go then into the, into the reserve for the, go towards the reserve for the roads, for the road project. Yeah. So we got the IMRF, we got $12,000. I don't want to change the uniforms right now because we are, we are doing, that's a broad, it's the words uniforms, but it's not necessarily all for uniforms, and that, that I believe is legitimate or is reasonably legitimate. The IMRF, we would need to, we would need to move that to the, we could move that to miscellaneous expenses and put that towards the reserves for the, for the, for the project, the future projects that we're trying to raise money for.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so if I, let's see, how we do this. I would just strike the, strike the $12,000 from the IMRF, and then strike the 250 and modify that to $12,250, miscellaneous expenses. All right, and we need, I'd have to make a motion to, I mean, will we pass it or take a motion?
Do we have to vote down the first motion and then make a new motion?
Okay, yeah, let's vote. We vote down the first motion, then we'll make a second motion with the, with the amendment. Okay, so let's take a vote on the original motion that was approved and seconded.
Okay, Trustee Narodowski.
No.
Keenley.
No.
May.
No.
Perns.
No.
Bussie.
No.
All right, so now I need to have a motion made to approve the ordinance 2023-05 Road and Bridge modified, or modified so that the, that the IMF line is zero and the miscellaneous expenses is $12,250.
So moved. Second.
Okay. We've been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All right, and I want to say, Dale, that was a, I think that was a good check. I, uniforms, I did not, I did not catch the IMRF. That's a good catch, and it should not necessarily be there. Okay, we, any other questions, any other issues? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay. I think our next, I think that's all the new business. Then is there any discussion or comments from the trustees? Do we need to go into executive session?
We need a motion.
Let's, let's make a motion to go into closed session, and for purposes of release of closed session minutes. You have the ILS code on this.
ILCS 120/2.06/2D.
Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to closed session, and we'll then, we'll come back, come back out and vote on, vote on the possible release of closed session minutes. So the meeting back to order from coming out of closed session. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Okay, we have the approval to release of closed session, and the, the release would be, with proposing that we release the minutes from May 22, 23, the employee compensation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of all of our, our old business and the closed session. Is there any, do any of the trustees have any comments or any discussion? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.